Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to the Board of Selectmen meeting for Wednesday, August 16th. Mr. Pinio, do we have a need for non-public this evening?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. We do under RSA 91A Roman numeral or number three, Roman numeral two D, real estate.
Thank you. Next, ladies and gentlemen, is consideration of minutes for August 2nd.
I'd like to make a motion that we table these minutes because I didn't have a copy of them in my packet, and I think some of the rest of you didn't either.
I'll second that.
Motion to table and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay. Public hearings. Our first one. Wolfboro Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, August 16th, 2023, at 6:35 at the Wolfboro Town Hall Great Room at 84 South Main Street in Wolfboro, New Hampshire, per RSA Chapter 31, Section 95-B, to consider accepting the unanticipated funds from an L-Chip grant in the amount of $37,500 to be deposited into the Conservation Fund for the purchase of tax maps 37-7 and 37-8.
Hi, good evening. This is Lenore Clark, the Chair of the Wolfboro Conservation Commission. I believe this is now the fourth public hearing we've had relevant to this project, which began back in the COVID era of 2020. But for the benefit of the public that hasn't been paying attention to all four public hearings, the reason behind this project is to acquire a couple of parcels of land totaling almost nine acres up in North Wolfboro. It provides permanent parking lot and trailhead access to our Whiteface Hiking Trail. The property has already been acquired. It was purchased with the blessing of the Board of Selectmen back in January of 2021. And we agreed, the Conservation Commission agreed to pursue the purchase of the property with the agreement that we would purchase, or excuse me, pursue private fundraising either through donors or grants. And we were successful in acquiring an L-Chip grant in the amount of $37,500. So we are here to have a public hearing to accept the unanticipated funds, which will fund approximately a third of the total project. Another third has been funded by the Land Bank of Wolfboro, Tuftonboro, and then the final third funded by ourselves.
All right, thank you. I'll open up the public hearing. Does anybody in the audience have any questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Board members, I'd entertain a motion to accept this.
I'll make a motion that we, that we accept the L-Chip grant, the amount of $37,500 to be deposited into a Conservation Fund, purchase of tax maps 37-7, 37-8.
Second.
Motion by Dave, seconded by Luke. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right, thank you. Next, public hearing. Wolfboro Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, August 16th, 2023, at 6:30 PM in the Great Hall, Wolfboro Town Hall, for the acceptance of unanticipated funds less than $10,000 in accordance with RSA 31:95-B3 relative to a donation from WETCO in the amount of $833.34 to be designated for the work of the Wolfboro Energy Committee. Do we have somebody here to speak to this? I do not see Nancy online.
Do you want me to speak on it?
Sure.
So what it is, is the Energy Committee had some events, and they received donations at these events, and the donations went into an account with WETCO. And now WETCO is cleaning up some of their smaller accounts, so they want to have it transferred into the Energy Committee for use for future projects and anything the Energy Committee needs.
Okay. Thank you, Brian. I'll open up the public hearing. If anybody in the audience has any questions or comments on this, this grant, donation. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Board members, any questions, comments?
I have a question. Is it going into a donation account? Okay, that's what I'm saying. Thank you.
Any others? I'd entertain a motion to, to accept this donation.
Motion to accept unanticipated funds less than $10,000 in accordance with RSA 31:95-B3 relative to a donation from WETCO in the amount of $833.34 to be designated for work of the Wolfboro Energy Committee.
Second.
Motion by Luke, seconded by Brian, to accept. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Let's see. Next, we have temporary event permits. Wolfboro Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, August 16th, at approximately 6:30 to consider a temporary event permit for the Wolfboro Area Chamber of Commerce to host Wolfboro Summer Street Fair and Annual Sidewalk Sale Days. This event is located at various locations in downtown, including Kate Park and Fossfield from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM on August 25th through the 27th of 2023.
Hi, Mary. Mary DeVries, on behalf of the Wolfboro Area Chamber of Commerce. We're, I'm sorry, I'm looking down at the mic. So we're looking forward to this as a new, new in our list of annual community events. And it does incorporate what traditionally on this weekend has been our sidewalk sale days. So sidewalk sale days are, is one of the activities in the event. And then we have included in the marketing of Wolfboro Summer Street Fair, activities and events, concerts that other organizations had planned over that August 25, 26, and 27 weekend. And so just creating a larger opportunity for, to draw people into the community, and that, that means our residents as well as visitors. So maybe they'll spend a little more time being here in our local community during that three-day weekend. So we do have lots of yard games going on. If I could, Mr. Chairman, pass this
Certainly.
to the board?
Thank you.
So that is a not-to-scale poster, so, but it does give you an idea of the activities that are planned for Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. That Saturday in the evening, we are asking you to consider letting us use just a short portion of Railroad Avenue to expand the events, kind of spread them out a little bit. It will not interfere with people being able to access around Central Ave and back to the Glendon Street parking lot into Depot Street and around to Central Ave both ways.
All right. So I'll open up the, the, any public comment on this, the public hearing part of it? Anybody have any questions or comments on this, this event? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Board members. Linda?
I have a couple of questions. I'm assuming you're going to ask us to shut down the parking spaces on the Back Bay side of Railroad Avenue?
Yes, that one section.
That one section. And do you have a time when you want us to shut that down? So it's a, you know, because people will be parking there, and at some point, we're going to need to have a time you'd like us to shut them down.
Yep. So we would like the activities to be set up, ready to go for 6 o'clock, so we don't need a lot of time to do that, so maybe 5:30. If it's 6 o'clock, we can make 6 o'clock work. We didn't want to ask for any earlier than that timeframe because I, I happen to work in that area.
Okay.
And just observing over the years, we feel like that will have the least impact on people trying to park in that area. And by closing it off, will create a safe environment for those family games.
Okay.
And we have volunteers for the Chamber of Commerce who are, have committed to being there to help with that closed down in any way that is appropriate.
And so in terms of if I, if I understand it, we've got a lot going on. We're going to have a movie in the park. You're going to run this. We're going to have the community bandstand going. And I'm wondering whether we should look at some signage on helping people know where to go to park. And it would be nice if the Chamber could help with that, because it's going to be a lot of activity. So I found when we closed down dockside, people needed help finding where to go to park.
We absolutely will do that. We have prepared already the, we have the yard sign stakes, so we can plug those in with the proper signage in those different locations, yes.
Thank you.
And we'll have people, people power too.
Okay, thank you.
Brian?
What if there are cars in the location that you want to close down, parked there when you're trying to close down and make room for those activities to start happening?
Yeah, I, again, so this is the first time for this event, so we'll have this year to look back on and reflect how that works. We have discussed this in our team meetings, and we, you know, we're, a car or two, or even three, we don't see that that would have
You can work around it.
We can work around it, absolutely. And then, of course, if the people want to leave and they come in, we can work around
Any other questions for the board? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll move to issue a temporary event permit for the Wolfboro Chamber of Commerce to host Wolfboro Summer Street Fair and Annual Sidewalk Sale Days. This event is located in various locations in the downtown, including Kate Park, Fossfield, from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM on August 25th through 27th, 2023, Permit 2023-56.
Second.
Motion by Linda, seconded by Luke. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Let's see. The next temporary event is the Wolfboro Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, August 16th, at approximately 6:30 to consider a temporary event permit for the Wolfboro Parks and Recreation Department to host a movie in the park on August 26th, 2023, from dusk till 11:00 PM in the soccer field at Fossfield, Permit Number 2023-57.
Isn't that covered in this one?
No, this is, comes through Park and Rec. We have an application from, and this is putting out by the Park and Rec Department. It's in conjunction, but it's not putting out by the Chamber.
Yeah, okay. Because it's listed on here.
Yeah. So this is a, basically a movies, movies in the park program in Fossfield. She's, Christine's done this annually for quite a while now. She is having one here going along with the same weekend as the previous event we just talked about. So I'll, I'll open up a public hearing if anybody in the audience has any questions or comments. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Have board members, any questions, comments, or concerns?
Make a motion for a temporary event permit for Wolfboro Parks and Recreation Department to host a movie in the park on August 26, 2023, from dusk to 11:00 PM in the soccer field of Fossfield, Permit Number 2023-57.
Second.
Motion by Luke, seconded by Brian. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay. Let's see. The next temporary event, the Wolfboro Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, August 16th, at approximately 6:30 to consider a temporary event permit for the Kingswood High School Cross Country Team to host a cross-country meet at Abenaki on October 12th, 2023, from 2:30 PM to 6:30 PM, Permit Number 2023-58.
Good evening. I'm Dan Place, the high school cross-country coach.
And I'm Sarah Christian, the middle school coach.
And we, we are requesting permission to host our one meet a year for both high school and middle school on the Abenaki Trails. We've used these trails in the past, and then with COVID, it kind of went away. The Kingswood High School complex is not ideal to host a race. There is traffic involved and other sports going on that we have to interrupt. So the trails at Abenaki are perfect for what we look to do. We'd also like to have a training session or two over there. We've done that in the past, just so our kids are familiar with the course. And I think that's it.
Okay. Well, this time I'll open up the public hearing. Anybody in the audience have any questions or comments who'd like to speak? Could you come up to the mic, please, and, you know?
Is this a multiple-school event?
Yes. There's typically our school and two, maybe three others. Just for the record, that was Bob Lohman that came up to speak, so we got you covered.
Any other questions or comments from the, from the audience? Seeing now, close the public hearing. Have board members?
Hi. You were me, Linda.
We, we need an insurance policy. We don't have that at this time, and it said you need to contact the police department so they can find out whether you need any traffic help and/or any security during it. And as far as any practice, it's public land, and I don't see any problem. The event, I think you do, but for just to practice, I don't have
Our AD mentioned insurance, Erin House, so I, I can get in contact with him and have him
Okay.
send you that.
Those are the two I have.
Brad?
Yes.
Also, we are going to be placing signage up there, recommending that people stay 100 feet away from the spray field area that's up there that sprays the town effluent. So in constructing the race you best, best you can, you're probably going to need to stay 100 feet away from the spray areas.
Okay. I have a map of the course.
Yeah, it doesn't look like they're up that way. Looks like you're on the cross-country ski trails.
Yes.
And those cross-country ski trails don't go up by our
Correct. Just, just to make sure, you know, make sure you try and keep people and, you know, other schools might be, people might go for like just quick warm-up runs and things like that. So we just have to make sure we stay 100 feet away from those.
Great. Any other questions or comments from the board? I'd entertain a motion.
Move to approve a temporary event permit for Kingswood High School Cross Country Team to host a cross-country meet at Abenaki on October 12th, 2023, from 2:30 PM to 6:30 PM, Permit Number 2023-58. That's also pending. We get an insurance certificate, and also they check with the police department on whether they need a, a traffic enforcement.
I'll second that.
Motion by Luke, seconded by Linda. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay. Next temporary event is an amendment to a permit. The Wolfboro Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, August 16th, at approximately 6:30 to amend a temporary event permit for the Lakes Region Pickleball Tournament on September 14th through the 17th of 2023 at Fossfield to include food trucks and the basketball courts, who are not listed on the original permit from 5:00 AM to 10:00 PM.
Good evening. I'm Josie Antoro with the New Hampshire Lake Region Pickleball Club. Yes, we have decided to amend the permit, if we, with your permission, to allow for food trucks during hours of pickleball play. We now anticipate around 600 people will be there that weekend. That'll put too much, too much of a strain on local establishments. So by having two, two food trucks there at a place designated by Wolfboro Parks and Recreation, we hope to make it more comfortable for our players.
Okay. I'll open up the public hearing to the public here. If anybody has any comments or questions?
Thank you. Very much in favor of the event. The Chamber of Commerce is willing and available to communicate to the local restaurants in anticipation of an increased need for staff and services on that day. Be glad to work with the organizers of the event on that. It's a time of year where they may appreciate that larger capacity at the restaurants, but just wanted to say we are available to help with any communications on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the public? Close the public hearing. Board members?
Yeah, it looks like we also have to update the application to make sure that the basketball courts are included, which wasn't in the original permit. But you're going to use the basketball courts for?
Yes, and the basketball court was in the original permit. I don't know what happened there, but when I made the presentation back in October, we included the basketball courts.
Well, what we got was that it was not included, and we'll just make it part of our motion to make sure there's no problem. How about that?
That's fine, then.
And I believe you've also thought it was somewhere in here that you've kind of worked out the location for the food trucks to be.
Christine, yeah, wants it somewhere near the pavilion, but off the grass accordingly. And we're going to have these, make sure these trucks bring their own generators, so we don't use town facilities.
Yep.
I would, in the future, it would be nice if you possibly could use, and I'm okay with the, the trucks from Osiphe, but we have a couple of vendors that are right in Wolfboro that own food trucks. And if they're available, I, I would like to see it kind of stay in the community if possible.
I agree with you, Brian. Joyce Lake monitored this process. She looked at some 18 vendors, and the ones she came up with were the only ones who were free of those dates.
Any other questions, comments? Mr. Pinio?
Mr. Chairman, I would just be curious as to who's responsible for the trash related to the food trucks and relocating it to a final disposal site.
We expect the food trucks to cover their own problems, and if there's anything left behind, Jim, we will take care of it.
Thank you.
Okay, yep. As long as you communicate that with the food trucks, that would be great, Joe. Any other questions, comments? Or motion?
Yeah, I'll move to amend Permit 2023-1 to add food trucks and to update that the basketball courts are also approved and that they will address trash.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Linda, seconded by Luke. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Okay, next on our agenda is a bulk vote, which includes a weekly manifest, August 4th of $3,132,461, August 10th of $160,284, and August 11th, $184,211. It's property tax refund abatement applications, there's denials on those, intent to cut, cut wood, and property tax credit exemptions are included, so.
I'll make a motion that we approve bulk vote, A through D.
I'll second.
Motion by Dave, seconded by Linda, to approve a bulk vote, Items A through D. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay. Next, we have no board committee or appointments under new business, the budget, the July budget, actual versus the budget.
Seems like I was just here, but Catherine Carpenter, Finance Director. I will give you a quick overview of July 2023, actual versus budget report. As of July 31st, the general fund operating budget is at 64%, which is a little, slightly higher than the seven-month average of 58%. The revenues for the general fund are at 71%, which is also a little higher than the 58%. Motor vehicles continue to come in strong, and we've got half of the taxes booked. For water funds, operating budget's at 69%, electric is at 64%, sewer's at 89%, pop whaling is at 88%. The revenues for water are at 80%, but 56% is what the residents are using. Electric is at 59%, sewer's at 77%, and the residents are at 50%, and pop whaling's at 41%. We're doing pretty well on gas. We're only at about 45% expended, but diesel, we're at 72%. Legal, we're about 40%, and overtime are about 78%. Some of those were caused by the first half of, the first three months of the year when we had a lot of snow. Then things settled down, and then we had some storms in July. We, the town manager and I have met with the Public Works Director. He probably will need some money being transferred from other areas of the budget to cover some of his consumables, fixing the roads. He really wants to get all the roads fixed before plowing season starts. So we will be giving our recommendation to the board once we identify money on that. And we're also meeting with the pop whaling team because they are targeting to be over-expended. I've mentioned a few months, the compressor had an emergency repair of almost $40,000, and we had some soft costs that were picked up by the pop whaling. Other than that, we're status quo at this point. I guess I also should mention out loud that the audit report has not been delivered. A draft report has not even been delivered to me at this point. The auditors are taking responsibility for that. They got behind this summer and just can't catch up. So I, I don't have an idea of when I'll be getting it, but I am asking them frequently. So it's unfortunate. Do you have any questions for me? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Casey. Okay, next on our agenda, commercial vessel landing permit for the Sandy. Have somebody here from that group? Don't see anybody.
See nobody online either, Brad?
Nobody online either, okay. The public, what this is, is the YMCA camp of Greater Boston, has a boat called the Big Sandy Two, which comes into town about 10 times during the summertime, about, was it once a week, I believe? And they bring the kids in, they come and get ice cream, stuff like that, and head back out to the camp. So they weren't aware that we had a, they used to just come in, park at the dock, it was not a problem, just now it's so busy down there. They found out that we have a, a permit process for commercial landing permits. They put an application in for it to be able to come in here and do it, do it that way. So, board members, do we have any, we have an insurance certificate from them, and they don't need a sign for anything because they're not giving rides out at all?
Move to issue the Sandy, a commercial vessel permit for 2023.
Second.
Motion by Brian, seconded by Dave. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Now we have a appointment here from David Shade regarding a mass-landing marine patrol boat parking area there. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for letting me speak tonight. The top of marine safety in our local lakes. I live at 17 King Pine Road, also known as King Pine Lodge on Crescent Lake. I've lived there since 2003, when my wife and I perched as the cabin. I've been in, on, or around Winnie, Wentworth, and Crescent since 1969, after getting out of the service. In 2022, I wrote to the town manager and the chief of police about a serious safety issue on Crescent and Wentworth Lakes. The number of times we've seen the marine patrol on the lakes has dramatically reduced over the past few years. I've shared with the town officials a letter I received from the marine patrol agent for this area. His main response as to the lack of patrol was his inability to find a parking spot at mass landing. Due to the reduction in staff of marine patrol agents, he is now required to travel and patrol multiple lakes in the area. His issue is simple. When he arrives at mass landing, after he tries to launch a craft, there is no spot for him to park his truck and trailer. He's had to wait up to multiple hours for parking to become available. I suggested back in 2022 in a letter I wrote to the town I suggested back in 2022, in a letter I wrote to the town, that the town lock one spot as official use only, marine and official use only. While the town cannot address the issue of marine patrol staffing, they can make it easier for the marine patrol to do their job when they come to the lake. If on any day you stop at Mass Landing, you will find multiple cars in the upper parking area for more than a few days. I believe some of those cars are island owners. I also feel some of those spots are being used by local homeowners, thereby reducing the parking spots for day users. On the lower level, there are clearly marked trailer spots that are often, often filled with just SUV and other vehicles without trailers. I wonder if the spots were open in the upper level, would they not be forced to use the trailer-only spots? Since there appears to be no enforcement in the trailer-only rule, the next reasonable solution to the marine patrol parking is to grant one spot for their use. While police and law enforcement present alone does not stop 100% of the lake issues, any activity by a patrol agent does help reduce the dangers on the lake. The owners of the lake property of Wentworth and Crescent deserve better service from the marine, from the marine patrol. The town can help in this matter by simply marking one spot for their use. Respectfully, I request you respond to this request and grant the request that, that will improve the safety of all boaters and lake users. Thank you for your time.
Any questions before I? Pardon?
Any questions before I?
I'm sure we have some here. I think I recall some correspondence going back and forth that we do have parking available at the parking lot down by Linda's Flowers, which is a very short walk up the Bridge Falls path to Mass Landing. And I thought I saw one email there that we had availability at the church just across the street to park a boat, you know, the vehicle and the trailer there if needed, when they come to the lake and there. I don't know, has that been talked to you at all about or considered?
I saw the letter, but respectfully, sir, having a agent park his boat and leave the marine equipment, all the police equipment, unintended while he drives down the road and parks at Linda's Flower and walks back, I really don't think that's a great use of his time and secure of that police equipment. I'm not sure why we're pushing back on one spot for marine patrol that affects well over a couple hundred people on the lake. I'm not sure what's the issue here. One spot missing isn't going to stop a major fishing tournament or anything else. So respectfully, I disagree with that response.
Okay.
And I'm struggling very hard to get marine patrol to address the fact that we've had no activity on the lake. And obviously, the other day, we had a very tragic accident, and I don't know, you know, having the marine patrol out there checking people for their licenses, for slowing down the violations that we're having on the lake, and we have a lot of them, I just think we need more marine patrol.
Would this be for marine patrol agents, or is this going to be for like the, I don't know if they still have the auxiliary patrol where it's like volunteers that come out and do this?
I would recommend it says official use only, which means police, marine, and EMT, and any other official use.
Okay.
All right.
I believe we have, Mr. Dave would like to respond?
Good, how are you?
Good, thank you. I'm Brendan Davy. I have actually spoken with a few of my officers about this. I'm Captain Brendan Davy, New Hampshire State Police, Field Area 1, and Marine Patrol, sir, has the dubious distinction of being under my command. So I am privy to some of the email chains going back and forth. I've spoken with a couple of the, with one of the officers who, whose response is material to your understanding of the staffing issue, and that is a real issue, and we're hiring part-time and seasonal marine patrol officers. So that is something that we're working hard to address. Coverage is, is indeed an issue as well. I think if the, if the board would be willing to, to give me the opportunity to speak with you for a bit, that if we cannot find a suitable solution otherwise with our officers and get them out there, which, again, coverage is, is the issue primarily, I don't believe that the parking problem in and of itself is the point of failure for attention out on that waterway. And yes, there was a tragic incident two Sundays ago. So I'm not sure, I'm not convinced that the parking issue is, is the, is the crux of the matter out there. I think your, your argument is, is well laid out. If, if it were the case, I would ask for a little bit of time to speak to you and for the board to obviously entertain, a citizen to come back and reopen the issue, if you'd be open to that.
At one time, wasn't there someone who let them use their private launch?
Yes, sir.
In order? Is there, is that, is there a solution like that available? At your lodge, sir, do you have a public, a private launch at your lodge?
No, look, that gentleman that used to allow that?
Could you use a mic? Could you use a mic, please, so the RTV can hear you?
I'm sorry, to answer the question, the gentleman that used to allow the marine patrol to park on Swift River there?
Yep.
He actually, I've been informed, and still saying, yes, you can still park there. So, but that would most likely leave a marine patrol boat there most of the time. And I have no, I have no problems if you wish to table it and bring it back after the lieutenant, did I say that right? Captain, sorry. Captain and I, God, I'm going to fail my military rules here. Now Captain and I have a chance to talk.
Yeah, okay. I think that'd be a good idea myself to let you two speak and then come back to us with a recommendation or a request.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Need a motion?
There's somebody, Brad?
Oh, yes, come on, please.
Thank you. My name is Bob Spear, and I've been an island resident on Lake Wentworth since I was 10 months old, and we totally enjoy it. We use Mass Landing as our departure for island use, as well as it's the only launch available for the, for Crescent Lake, Smith River, and Mass, and Lake Wentworth. You know, I'm, as a former marine patrol officer, I can certainly say that the public safety is number one, okay? I'm not sure that the, this, this process or this suggestion is the best one. Mass Landing is, has got a number of problems. Thanks to the town, we've done, improved the parking, et cetera, et cetera, but at the same time, we've also expanded its use tremendously. As a matter of fact, thanks to your Director of Public Works, Mr. Randall, I'm meeting with him on Friday morning to discuss Mass Landing and the various needs that we have. One of them is dock space. Another one is no one enforces the rules. And so there's a number of issues that all tie together here. And I think it, table, if you will, but I don't think this is, I think this is a very short-term and unnecessary decision at this point in time. I think there are better ideas. Where that boat was moored before, I've talked to that owner before, last year, and he thought the patrol boat at his dock was great. He loved it. And then, of course, you have the vandalism issue at Mass Landing. So there are a lot of issues, and it needs to be thoroughly vetted. And believe me, this is not about, you know, curtailing public safety or not wanting an officer on the lake. It's, in my personal view, having an officer on the lake for half a day, a week, to patrol is not enough, anywhere near enough, and we need more patrol. And so to tie up a dock space on Mass Landing, seven days a week, 24 hours a day, for someone to use for a shift, half a, half a day, pending, of course, emergencies, which are very important. I get that. We need to think carefully about it, and we also need to look at the larger problems of Mass Landing and look at the totality of it. I had talked with your previous Director of Public Works about a plan for Mass Landing, and he was supportive of that. We just never had the time to put that together or to present it to the board. So I'm saying to you as an islander, knowing that the parking is extremely limited, and that designating one spot for a marine patrol boat doesn't seem to make a lot of sense. So if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them, but thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anybody else want to make any comments? All right, board members?
I would like to make a motion to table this appointment and reschedule it when, after he has talked to marine patrol, and maybe we've also had some input from our Public Works Director.
Second. A motion by Linda, seconded by Dave. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next on our agenda is employment for Peter Webster regarding the hawkers and peddlers location. Is he here with us tonight? Don't see him. I think we'll just.
Can table that?
Table, yeah.
Motion to table the hawkers and peddlers location?
Second.
Motion by Luke, seconded by Brian, to table this one. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next is the Central Dispatch Capital Reserve Fund request for $290,000 and $242,000.
So you may recall, over the past several years, we've been putting money into a capital reserve fund for the ultimate replacement of the dispatch console. This warrant article, or this account was established in 2019 for the purpose of replacement of dispatch console and other related equipment and installation and other related expenses. Currently, the account has $325,124, and Captain Libby is here to speak on his behalf to get this project rolling, along with the mobilization of the public safety building, renovation, and expansion. Captain?
Yeah, thanks. As you know, the public safety building is going to be starting very soon. We'd like to get this purchase, the $290,242, this is for the purchase of the new console and the furniture. We're looking at a, a year for it to come, to get hopefully into Wolfboro after they build it, once we make the order. So it could be longer, and we don't want to delay any of the public safety building. So, because they're going to be doing the renovation of that Phase 3. So we want to make sure it's on site prior to that.
Sounds like a very reasonable approach to me. Board members, any questions or comments for the captain?
No, isn't that why we had the capital reserve account for just today?
Exactly. Would somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we go ahead with the purchase of the console, MCC 7500, with the furniture costs totaling $290,242.23.
Second. Motion by Dave, seconded by Luke. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You are all set to put the order in?
Perfect. I got the next one, too.
You got yourself a radio.
Next on the agenda is permission for the Wolfboro Police and Wolfboro Community TV to host Coffee and, Coffee and Connections at the Kate Park.
Yeah, so we're just looking to change the venues. We try to move around. We try to get people to get on our show. So we do this monthly with the community television. So we're just looking to get out at Kate Park right now, and while the weather's good and show off Wolfboro a little bit.
Sounds good to me.
Where are you going to go when it gets cold?
And then we go back inside somewhere. Venture, venture around.
Linda?
Yeah, I just, we always do this to anybody who uses Kate Park. It is a public space. People will be walking around, they'll be making noise, and you work around that.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's easy.
Yep.
We're usually inside a restaurant or something like that, so it's pretty, noise is common, so.
Somebody like to make a motion?
I'll move that we give, give permission to the Wolfboro Police Department and the community TV to host Coffee and Connections at Kate Park.
Second.
Motion by Linda, seconded by Brian. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is a discussion regarding construction at Kate Park and at 33 South Main Street.
So Justin from Four Corners is here to speak on behalf of this request. They are working on the upper deck framing of the building at 33 South Main Street, which is also known as the Downtown Grill. You've got some sketches here and a memo from the code official outlining the requirements. And Justin's here to speak on behalf of what he's looking for to be able to bring this project closer to completion. Justin?
Thanks for your time. I met with Jason, Building Inspector, and he directed me to the board with option, to present some options for ways to protect the public while we're doing the second-story construction of that deck on the back of 33. The two options I presented, one was a fenced area that could be removed every day to keep people from walking within a certain perimeter of that deck based on the code requirements for public safety in, in the fall zone. That first option with the fence doesn't really work great. It blocks that new sidewalk that was installed, the new stone dust sidewalk. I presented a second option, which was a, is a, for the time of the construction, while we're overhead, is a plankt walk-through staging tunnel, similar to what you'd see if you're working in the city on a sidewalk. That's a safer way to approach this of the two. People can still get inside a fence or around a fence, and it takes away the sidewalk access. We would present, the plan presents to have a covered overhead pathway with, and we'd put some signage up that says walkway access to Kate Park and walkway access to the parking lot, depending on which side we're on.
Yeah. You know, when I looked at these, I kind of preferred that, that method myself, doing the stage, the hard plankt on top and, and keeping it so it's in alignment with the, with our entrance pathway into the park, too, and stuff. And did I read right, too, that you're anticipating about a five to six-day working, working days timeframe for this to, to happen?
Yes.
And then you'd be taking it down and be done with that part of the project?
Yes.
Yep. Board members, any other questions? Linda?
Yeah, I have a real problem granting this. Around March 15th, we granted Four Corners Construction permission to use the parking lot down at Dockside until May 5th. And they did not stop working on May 5th. We did, asked also for a landscaping plan, which I think you helped get, but we did not, they went on into early part of May. We eventually had to remove a dumpster and the materials to clean the area up. We had, in July, we had construction material dumpsters and construction trucks constantly blocking the handicap space, so the town had to move, remove the handicap space in order to provide handicap residents with the space to park. And so now we have a new walkway closer to it, which is what he is talking about. We have constantly had problems with construction trucks taking up parking spaces on the street and putting cones out and saving those parking spaces just for the construction staff. And then we've had, there are issues, and it's not part of the construction exactly, but what really bothered me was, is the trash issues that we're having down there in this area. And I brought a bunch of pictures that people could look at, but the final straw for me was on Winnipesaukee Day. We were. can look at. But the final straw for me was on Winnipeg Day. We were showcasing our town, and our walkway had trash in it. Now, this may not be you, but that is the people who own this building. And so I've, I don't know that if I give them permission for five to eight days, that that thing won't be there for two weeks. I would absolutely not be willing to give it all until after Labor Day. I think the public has looked at propane tanks, trash, had their walkway blocked. And I think that we should, at least if people agree to do it, that we have to make sure that it's after Labor Day and the last couple of weeks of summer that we have the downtown there looking as best we can. I see it as a total lack of regard or respect for the residents of this town or our ordinances.
I have a question. When? Just, there's no when. So there's a couple of pictures and plans and instructions, but there's no when. When, when were you expecting to do this?
We can't move forward on it until we receive approval to do this, and then we have to get the permit in hand. We applied for it two months ago.
So you've applied for the permit?
And we're ready to do it.
From our town? You've applied for a permit from our town two months ago, and it hasn't been granted yet?
For the Phase II, hasn't been granted, and it's been hung up on this.
And it's been hung up on this. So what is your expected, say that, say that we approve this, and your permit comes through in the next week or two, when were you expecting to do this?
Immediately. As soon as we receive the permit. It's been, I believe it's sitting, waiting on this, according to Jason's office.
Okay. Has anybody heard that?
Yeah, it's the first time I've heard that.
Me, too.
That Jason's waiting for us to approve something, to issue a permit? Am I missing something here?
So he will not issue the permit until there is a plan to deal with the walkway?
And he's using our land. He's using public space. That's why it's got to come to us. And we're the only one who can grant permission on public land.
Correct.
All right. I don't, I personally would, would just see the scaffolding with the planks on it, so people can get by. The when is the same question I had, Brian. It's when is this going to be done? I will agree with Linda that personally, I don't think it should be done or started till after Labor Day. And if we need a motion to that effect, I will make the motion that we approve this, subject to them using the scaffolding with the planking, and that it ought to be started till after Labor Day.
And not during Columbus Day?
Well, they should have it all framed and done in five to eight days.
Yeah, if they get pushed up, I wouldn't want it done on Columbus Day weekend, either.
Yeah, but even if you compensate for some weather, five to eight days of work with the scaffolding up. I mean, if it goes into two weeks, it still's not going to get into October.
So maybe we should, we should put a range that it needs to be done. What, what day is Labor Day?
It needs to be the 5th through the 14th would be eight, eight days.
So Labor Day is the 5th?
No, 5th is September. If we give them, if we give them the date of the, September 5th through September 14th is a time period. That gives you your maximum eight days, which is what you wrote. And after eight days, it needs to come down.
I mean, I don't mind doing September 6 to September 20th or something. And they can have it for eight days in that window.
I think we need to nail them down with the problems we had before. We had May 5, and it was into May 12, and we had to do it ourselves. So my feeling is, we give them a set time that they have to do it in. I think that's one of the issues we're having down there.
Now, we have to make sure that they get the permit in hand in time.
They've got enough time between now and the 5th of September to get that.
Come on.
I'm sure whatever, if we do an approval of something tonight, there, Justin will be in the next, tomorrow morning to get the permit from Jason. And they'd have details on what our motion is, so, the dates, so...
I don't have any problem with adding Linda's dates to my motion. Okay, if somebody wants to second that.
If you want, we want to just restate the motion then, Dave, for us, refresh us?
I don't have any problem. I'll make a motion that we approve the access to the park with scaffolding and planking on the top, and that we allow them the dates that Linda?
5th is September through the 14th of September.
Okay. And that work not begin until after Labor Day. That would be the dates that you...
Beginning on the 5th, right?
Yep.
Yep. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Dave, seconded by Brian. Now, any discussion?
Those dates work for you?
Sounds like they have to.
Okay.
Yeah. This, I have one other thing, if it's okay. Has to do with the, the two propane tanks that are in the way of where we have to build the footing under that deck. We need to just set them aside four feet, so we can dig the footing and then put them back. And we've had some pushback in that request, and not sure where that lies. They block our way to do it.
Where are you going to put them? Are you going to put them on town property?
Right beside the two that are there that are already on town property.
Well, you have a lease for the four of them.
I don't.
Or license agreement. Well, I'm, I'm assuming you're speaking for the owner of the building who has hired you. So that's what's...
Well, why don't we just deal with this motion, and do we have on the floor first, with just the construction dates for the, for the deck itself there, that we can talk about the propane tanks separately? Any other discussion on the motion for the dates of September 5 through the September 14? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Opposed.
Okay. Now we could talk about the, the request to move the propane tanks for, to put the footing in. How long a timeframe would you, are you talking a couple of days?
Two days.
Are they going to be moved and still connected?
Yes.
Disconnected and moved?
They have to disconnect them, move them, and then reconnect them. I had submitted a sketch on this.
We don't have it.
Quite a while back.
Okay. And who will be doing the disconnect and the reconnect?
Eastern.
Eastern propane. And where will, it's the two that, that are closer to the water?
Correct.
And where will they be putting them? Just four feet to the right?
Uh, no, they would move them beside the other two.
Behind the other two from when you, from the water?
Well, you can't, there's a big lilac behind them.
Yep.
So it'd be adjacent. Just, there's, there's four in a line.
Yep.
Picture these two closest to the lake setting to the side.
Okay, so they'll be beside the other two?
Correct.
Then if you, if you were to do that, would you put a caution fence around them or something?
Yes.
And you'll, you'll be two days only?
That's it.
We don't need to deal with that. So what we could do to address this is we could have another motion with the dates of being the 5th, maybe through the 7th, which gives them an extra day if there's weather there. It gives you, you know, two full days, and then the next day to get it all back, cleaned up, and put back together. I don't know if the board thinks along that line.
Sorry to interrupt. The only issue with that is whether the gas company can accommodate that day. Whenever they could accommodate is really when it would start the clock.
Yeah. That would want them to be sitting out there for another week afterwards, just because they can't get there, so...
Yeah. So then why don't we do this? Why don't we take, and if we do, we might have to amend our motion. We might have to approve this based on now that we're finding out when propane company can move the tanks, because the tanks have to be moved first, then the scaffolding has to be set up, then the footings can be poured, and the deck can be corrected. So if the propane company doesn't fall in their position, then everything else goes to heck in a handbasket, and we're back in square one. So how can we figure out how to get this so that it works? And it's only eight days, and it's all done.
I think if we give them those dates to work within, and they have to do it then...
Yep. And if they can't, then they have to come back?
Yep.
You know, that's what they got.
And do, just come up with some different dates and, you know, redo this whole thing again. But to leave it open-ended, I think, would be tough right now with everything we've had to deal with, with this whole, with everything going on down there. It's not necessarily, you know, it's not all Jason, Justin's fault here. It's, you know, some of it's, we're having issues with the owner, so...
See, my, my brain, my brain says this. Give them a, now, let me finish before anybody jumps down my throat. Give them a three-week window. In that three-week window, they're only allowed eight days. They notify the town 48 hours in advance when the propane company can start their project. The clock starts at that time. They have eight days to get it done. End of story. That's the way I would do it. But give them a, a begin time no earlier than the 5th, and a drop-dead time of maybe the 21st, 22nd, something like that. So, but they're only allowed to have scaffolding up eight days. The tanks move for two days. So it's still all the same process, but it gives them eight days that fall in a window of time. That's the way I would do it, so we can get the damn thing done.
I think with this, personally, I think with this lead time now of where we're in, August 16th here, you get a little, you got over two weeks of lead time to get them, you know, everything lined up and stuff. I think that would be enough time to work with Eastern to say, "I want to have you guys there on the 5th to disconnect and relocate the tanks, and, and at the same time, be back on the 8th to move them back in, in line where they're supposed to be, and hooked up again. Done deal." That'd be, that's the way I would approach it myself, but...
I just don't know what their lead time is. I don't think anybody here does right now.
Knows what is?
I think, no, none of us know what Eastern's lead time is right now.
No, but we have enough lead time, so they can schedule that in. I think they're, they'd be flexible enough to do, that's not a very big job for them, to come down, relocate them, and hook them back up. They'd be in and out of there in an hour, I would imagine.
Do you see a problem with that? Do you think if you called them tomorrow, they could do it?
Um, I can't speak for them. I've had longer lead times on more simple things with them. Tank deliveries, tank removals.
I think we gave them a timeframe. If because of that, they can't do it, then they can come back to us with a new date that gives us the eight days.
Is there another meeting between now and the 5th?
No.
Another selectmen's meeting? Or is there a way to meet it? Convey this, a time structure to Jim that gets to you folks for some sort of approval?
So you do meet on the 30th?
That's right, too, yeah.
We have a meeting, right?
So we will be getting together on the 30th on another matter. If, if we had to, we could...
We could amend the dates, but at this point, we lose...
It gives me two weeks to put a schedule together for you guys, if that's fair.
What was that now?
That gives me two weeks to put a schedule together for you folks.
Yep. Yep.
And then present it. I don't know, will it require me to come back if I have a defined schedule, or would I just be presenting a timeline?
If you've got a defined schedule, I think we can, they can probably make a decision.
So if we have this schedule, and you can make, you meet it, you could just let the town manager know that we're, we're on that schedule, that we approved. If not, then you can come back on the 30th with an amended schedule, and we will have to reapprove.
Fair.
Or revisit, rather. I didn't say reapprove.
Yeah. Revisit. Approve again.
So what does, what does the board think about, you know, giving them at least this timeframe, give them, you know, the time window for the propane tanks? And if he ends up working it out with Eastern, they can fall within that, then you don't have to come back for anything. You just inform the, you know, the town manager or Jason that, you know, we're in that time, time window. And would anybody want to entertain that as a, for a motion?
So moved. Yeah, second.
Motion by Brian, seconded by Luke to allow a timeframe from, I believe it's September 5 through September 8 for the relocation and reinstallation of the propane tanks.
Or four.
Correct? Any other discussion?
What is, is it, only difference from the last motion is that the propane tanks are included?
This is, this is strictly dealing with just the propane tanks separately. It is on their own timeframe, within the window that we gave.
In the window, we've already given them.
We've already given them, right.
What about, um, while we're on it all, what about the landscaping installation?
Well, let's stay with this issue here. We haven't had a vote yet on this one, so... Any other discussion regarding the relocation of the propane? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
One, okay. Brian?
Landscaping. The fall, the spring?
I don't, I'm not the owner. I don't know. I work under their direction. I provided a sketch. The tanks are in the way of where that has, once we do the deck, I'm assuming that that work could be done.
Okay.
But it would be senseless to do it now without moving the tanks, doing the work, completing the deck, and then assembling the landscape.
That's why the, the people who tend Kate Park agreed with me that a fence would be a better option, because during this...
Right, we've already decided that.
We're not through that.
I can't speak to that.
Okay, so I think we've covered everything. I think we've covered everything you wanted to...
Other than, there's been so many dates flying around. We have a three-day window for tanks, five to eight. And then is the, is that also the window from 5 to, what's the date for construction?
14th.
Five to 14?
Yep.
Okay. And I'll let you know if I fall, have to fall out of that and reapply.
Okay. Sounds good.
Thanks.
Okay, thanks.
Take care.
All right. Next discussion, the ambulance proposal for a fire department.
Okay. So I'm, I'm going to go through some items for the board and the public. The chief deputy is here, along with some of the staff. This is essentially going to be a 50,000-foot view of the anticipated expenses for an ambulance operation, and, and some, some choices that we've got to make pretty soon, so that we can move forward. Our goal going forward will be on the September 6 meeting, to try to hold a public hearing for the purposes of discussing the Capital Reserve Fund and whether or not those funds can be used for the purchase of a used ambulance. That came to us as a recommendation from the town attorney, based on the way that the warrant article was originally crafted and the position where we are in moving forward. He thinks we do have some flexibility on that. From that point, we're hopeful that same evening, we will be able to give you a, again, a 50,000-foot view of what we're looking at for anticipated revenues for the ambulance, if we were to bring this in-house. And then we're hopeful by the end of September, I think it's for the October 6 Board of Selectmen's meeting, to have the complete business plan put together with a series of recommendations to you for the budget process. So where we're at today is, the town issued an RFP earlier this year for ambulance services. We received two bids. Those two bids contained multiple options for services for the town. The incumbent provider, they did not bid on the contract for a variety of reasons. The current ambulance contract does expire December 31, 2023. With Stewart's Ambulance, there is the option inside of that agreement for an extension. Wolfboro Fire Rescue is currently licensed as a non-transport EMS unit with the state of New Hampshire, and at this time, they are not equipped with the abilities to transport patients. Ambulance services, based on the, the responses we received for the RFPs, they varied from 1.472 million all the way down to 600,000 for the year '24, and then going up. Currently, under the 2023 contract, we're spending 275,953. So no matter what we do, come the 2024 operating budget, we're going to see a significant increase in ambulance service costs for the town of Wolfboro. We, one of the reasons why Stewart's Ambulance did not bid on the contract, they do believe that the town of Wolfboro is in the best position to provide 911 response services, ambulance services to the town. They looked at this in Laconia in 2018. At that time, there was a lot of contention about the contract and the ambulance service operated by the city of Laconia, and it came back that Laconia was the best way to operate it through their fire department, and they continue to do that. it through their fire department, and they continue to do that today. So our current problem is the ambulance service equivalent to the level that we're accustomed to in the town of Wolfboro today is extremely expensive. Compared to what we're receiving today, we're going to go from that $270,000 to $1.4 million if we were going to offer a similar service based on the RFPs provided. The town currently is not in a great position to take on this, beginning in January of 2024 because of the public safety building construction, equipment, funding, and funding boils down to staffing. That's going to have to go in front of the voters. The current contract that we have has paramedic-level services within it. The chief and I have been having conversations. We need to have a conversation with the hospital regarding their paramedic-level intercept service so that we can hopefully operate at the advanced EMT level, which is lesser than the paramedic. Paramedic is in excess of 1,400 hours of education and about the same amount of time in clinical time to be able to get licensed. It's a two-year program, several, several thousand dollars, not including the cost to put the student through it. And then the EMT, which is known as the basic, that's simply a 100-hour course. So what is our solution going forward? We believe the best way to do this going forward is to enter into a one-year contract with Stewart's Ambulance Service. Had conversations with the principal of that firm. They are willing to do that, but it's going to cost us some money. This will give the fire rescue department the opportunity to hold public information sessions prior to the 2024 town meeting. And when we move into that 2024 town meeting, we're going to have to be preparing for the 2025 takeover of fire-based EMS, if that is the decision that the Board of Selectmen and the town decide to go. So as noted, suggested that we create three warrant articles for consideration in 2024, ask the voters to consider fire-based ambulance services beginning January 1st, 2025. The big takeaway on that is the staffing is pricey. Discussions about a lease purchase of a new ambulance in your packet, the chief has provided you a CIP program outlining the replacement of ambulances. Additionally, to establish an ambulance revolving fund to try and pay for some of these ambulances and capital expenses associated with the business as it goes forward. You know, the replacement of a cardiac monitor is $50,000. That's a big-ticket item. Replacement of a stretcher is $30,000 to $40,000. All these items are extremely expensive and they need to have access to the funds to be able to replace them in the event of failures. Should these articles fail, I think the best option that we have is to, after those warrant articles fail, go to the, reissue the RFP for ambulance services to take on ambulance operations for the town of Wolfboro effective January 1, 2025. How else can we address the problem? At that point, January 1, 2025, the public safety building will have reached a point where ambulance services can be operated from that location without a whole lot of lift there. We're hopeful on September 6, 2023, to hold a public hearing for the Board of Selectmen to garner input regarding the existing capital reserve funds to determine whether or not we can secure a used ambulance. I've had conversations with you. The chief has found a used outfitted ambulance in good condition. We've got to put some more hands on it, but we believe that it's a good starting base for us moving forward. Additionally, work to secure a one-year contract with Stewart's Ambulance to get us through December 31, 2024. That will allow us, effective January 1, 2025, to start the business. Time for staffing to become confident and comfortable carrying forward and transporting patients during transport. Time for staff to secure additional training if they so desire. Spread startup costs over additional fiscal years as opposed to just two. Reduces the chance of impact due to negotiations because the current employment contract expires December 31, 2024. So contracted service, today, we spent about $276,000. The equivalent level based on the RFPs we received in 2024 will be $900,000. Then it'll go to 927, 954, and then in 2027, it'll be 983,000 based on the low bid. So the staffing levels. I put together a concept for you a few weeks back that contemplates the very lowest level of staffing required to operate this service. That very low level states that if we were to do this compared to the $900,000 contract in 2024, it would be, it would be a savings to the town of $218,000. When we get into 2025, it would be a savings of $541,000, and this is compared to the contracted service. 2026, savings of $623,000, and then 2027, savings of $671,000 compared to a contracted service. Again, this is the very bare minimum of staffing to do this, and I don't know if that bare minimum is the solution. Luke?
So this is with one ambulance, right?
This would be with two ambulances.
Two ambulances.
Minimum staffing of four per shift.
Not what we have today.
Not what we have today.
Okay.
Then you, we had the meeting and you had asked, what is it going to cost us for the equivalent of what we have today for the town of Wolfboro to operate this? The chief and the deputy went through the spreadsheets that I had developed and updated it. This is what it looks like. So in, to run this business, changing the operating model to 42-hour work week from 48, it's going to cost the town an additional $213,000 in 2024 compared to a contracted service. Again, this is staffing of level of five, which the chief and deputy believe will give you the equivalent of what you have for operations today. And then from that point out, it's fairly equivalent to a contracted service. So this level brings it very close financially, and again, it does not contemplate the revenue end of the house.
That's what I was just going to ask. That doesn't include the revenues that we could receive.
So again, this, tonight, we're just talking about expenses. When we come back to you at the next meeting, we're going to have a similar breakdown that shows what our anticipated revenues may be going forward.
Please be very cautious with the anticipated revenues because we know that there are a lot of revenues that never materialize in this kind of situation.
I think that we can do that. I did provide you some documentation from similar communities as to the revenue that they're achieving, and if we can fall in line with those similar communities on revenues, it would put us in a pretty good position, but we're not prepared to talk about that tonight.
Yeah, and that's what's hard here because we really, I really need to see the budget, the revenue and the expenses because in there, you can do unacclaimed claims that can't be met, so we'd have a good...
That's why I've reached out to some towns to find some information of like that.
We really, that'll really give us the picture to hang our hat on.
Correct.
You know, this gives us a good general overview.
Yeah, so this, again, is exclusively looking at the high-end expense, and this gives us the bare minimum expenses. And the next meeting on September 6th, we will have those revenues, and then that'll all tie together for that October meeting in the full-mast business plan.
Can you explain to me the five-hour, five-shift, 42-hour week, what that actually means?
That's up to the chief and captain there here, or chief and deputy. They can talk to the operational end of the house.
Sure. Chief Dotty? Essentially, as I know you're aware, we work a three-shift rotation today, and you've all heard us particularly around budget time refer to Kelly Days and things that don't always make a lot of sense to the average person. What we would propose as part of this is to change to a 42-hour work week, which would eliminate the Kelly Day situation. I'm not going to be entirely accurate when I say this, but it kind of helps explain. The Kelly Day essentially is a way to make our work schedule fit the town's pay period if we reduce it to its absolutely most simple. By reducing the work week to the 42-hour work week, it's a much easier fit. It eliminates that scheduled day off. So what we would propose to you is to eliminate the three-group rotation, go to a four-group rotation of five personnel, and we would then backfill so there would be five on duty all the time. Somebody needed to take a crew leave, send them to training, whatever it happened to be, we would maintain a staffing of five people, plus the deputy and myself, and so forth. That is essentially the industry standard now in the fire service, is most places go to a 42-hour week. There are multiple ways of doing that in terms of actual what days you work and so forth. I think we're open to suggestions. In the end, 42 hours is 42 hours, and we end up in the same place. If the deputy has anything he'd like to add.
Nope, that's good.
So again, at that point, the whole discussion of backfilling Kelly Days and stuff is done and we don't have to worry about that anymore.
So just to simplify, my, because when it gets to the couple pages further, you know, we talked about a minimum staffing level of five. So there's a motor vehicle accident, okay? Multiple motor vehicles. Two ambulances go out in a fire truck hypothetically. How would, today, if there's a motor vehicle accident, Stewart's dispatches two ambulances, two staffed ambulances, and the fire service goes as well anyways. So there's going to be enough coverage if we have a multiple at the station to cover two ambulances going out.
What we end up with with this model is five cross-trained personnel on the first tone. If you compare that to today, some days it's three, we are still occasionally running with two, and I'm eliminating ourselves from the equation for the moment, plus the ambulance staff, which could be up to four with two ambulances. I would make the case that five cross-trained people are functionally the equivalent of that because those people can perform any tasks, and it also, don't forget, we can account for our off-duty members, our call members, who are available and can respond to a significant incident. One of our, one of the intentions with this proposal, whichever form it takes, is to develop and improve our model of, for lack of a better term, standby coverage, working with the full-time staff and the union and so forth, but also with our call staff to more specifically define availability in the overnight hours, for example. May take the form of perhaps a stipend to be available for a week at a time between, say, the hours of 5:00 PM and 7:00 AM on an all-companies tone or a first-alarm tone. We know these people are responding, period. Now it's more of a, if I'm available, if they need us, this kind of thing. We would have to work toward a much more defined model.
The other thing I would add about these expenses, the way they've been calculated, it calculates out wage adjustments over the life of the, through 2027 at 3.5% a year, and it also contemplates health insurance with a 5% increase over the years, starting out with family plans for everybody.
Right. We went to the top end, if you will, to be, try to be as transparent as possible.
That's good to know.
Conservative is good.
The backup material that we provided also includes anticipated costs for protective clothing for new hires on top of our normal budget for that sort of thing. We've anticipated uniforms, we've anticipated physicals, we've anticipated increased fuel costs for more vehicles, vehicle maintenance. I can't stand here and tell you that those four years that we've projected out are our complete budget for the next four years, but in the most relevant way to this proposal, I think you'll find, we've accounted for the bigger-ticket items.
I wrote, Jim, and I would like to see us have a fire budget and an ambulance budget so that we know that this is all related to the ambulance and that's for the fire. If you have staff going over, we do that in Public Works and Water and Stuff. It makes it clear for us what pertains, in my mind, to the ambulance and what is to the fire.
It can certainly take any form that the board feels is appropriate. I don't see any particular problem with that.
As one, it would work best for me.
I think it would be easier for the voters to be able to look at it as well. It would save us a lot of paperwork.
And I just want to make a mention, I found a document online, I shared it with Jim. I'm sure Jim already had it, though. Printed on 8/15/2023, and it's a 25-page document from the state of New Hampshire Department of Safety Division of Fire Standards Training and Emergency Medical Services, and it lists every EMS unit in the state.
It's on the website.
Yeah, and you can look at it and you can see what's what, and you can see that there's a large, large percentage, I'm guessing very close to half, of the towns in New Hampshire that have their own fire-based EMS. So we are not creating something new here. We're not reinventing the wheel. This is something that is done throughout the state, and so I think people can feel comfortable, and by the way, our town manager is an expert in this situation.
No, I'm not. The interesting thing about that document Brian mentions is, number one, it does account for 103 municipal-based, fire-based ambulance services, but that does not paint the entire picture. For example, where I came from, Littleton, they just took on this project and they just took on ambulance services, but they are contracted with three other communities. That's not identified in that plan. So the fact of the matter is, there's a lot of communities out there who contract with fire departments for their 911 services. So if you were to do a queue of how many towns receive ambulance services from a fire department, it's going to be significantly higher than the numbers in that sheet.
Even the 50%.
And if I may, Brookfield would be a prime local example of that, the contract with the town of Wakefield.
So that shows that we're in the, we're going in the right direction.
And since it came up in the presentation, I would like to make the point that we would be changing our EMS license with the state and licensing vehicles and so forth. I've had several conversations with the captain at the Bureau of EMS who handles that, and she assures me that with 24 to 48 hours of warning, that turnaround time would be within a week. That shouldn't be a concern in terms of delay or anything like that.
So to move this along, and again, to try to stay at that 50,000-foot level, this gives you an idea of what the expenses would look like at the top end of operations based on essentially a staffing of 22 by the fiscal year of 2026. Oops, probably just broke it. So Brian, this talks to your issue of collections. I did reach out to some communities. This is what we received back from them as to what they've received from revenues from their ambulance operations. So you can see in 20... So you can see in twenty twenty two, the average revenues from those four communities is four hundred and fifty nine thousand dollars. That's revenues, that's what they've collected, that's not what they build. So I do have the equation for what they've built. I've just hid that for transparency and to be able to understand it a little bit better. Additionally, I did put down there that their build versus collected was forty three percent. Furthermore, the state does allow for the town to create a revolving fund that would give us the flexibility to put some of the revenues into an account so that if that stretcher breaks, that cardiac monitor breaks, we have a catastrophic ambulance failure, we may have the money in that account to be able to leverage those without a huge hit on the operating budgets. So with the staffing level of twenty two, it would be a forty two hour work rather than a forty eight. That's, that's pretty much the industry standard today. It provides a better quality of life for staff. It also gives the department a greater depth of staffing, minimum manning of five, which would indicate two on an engine, two on an ambulance, and one flow between the engine and ambulance as a sign, and these guys would be there as well. Closely represented services delivered today. This is as close as we can get without adding another layer of four people. Significant increases in wages and benefits, that's the driving force behind this entire project. Staffing levels of fifteen, it's a forty eight hour work week, similar to current operations. It creates a scheduling nightmare. Minimum staffing level of four, two on an engine, two on an ambulance. This is similar to what a number of those communities that you see up on the board operate under. It is the most cost effective. It does give the chief the opportunity, if he can secure grant funding to grow additional staffing over the upcoming years, to reduce the startup cost to taxpayers. The solution is likely somewhere in between these two options. I don't think it's the low end. I think ultimately the high end is where we need to be. But as a startup, I think that's going to be a hard pill to swallow for a lot of people. So going forward, what, what we'd like to be able to do is consider three warrant articles in the coming year. And this will be flushed out a little more in the business plan, input that the, the department receives from the public input sessions and conversations with the voters. So Article one would be, are you in favor of hiring a certain number of people effective December twenty twenty four for the purposes of operating nine one one ambulance service effective January twenty twenty five? Basically puts together draft language so that we have a starting point. Article two, to see if the town will authorize Board of Selectmen to enter into a long term lease agreement for a new ambulance payable over the next number of years. Again, this could be paid for through that revenue account. And Article three would be to create that revolving fund as outlined in the previous slide. These are all obviously just baseline articles. They haven't been sent through legal. They're just getting some language together to talk about how we're going to handle some of these expenses if the board so desires. So what are our next steps moving forward? On September sixth, we'd like to hold a public hearing for you as the board to receive input from citizens regarding the use of the existing capital reserve funds to purchase a used ambulance. We would like to be able to have that conversation. On September sec, six, we will have some backup information from legal on that, and the chief will have additional information. You have some of that with you tonight in the CIP that he built out. And we also plan on that evening having a similar presentation to this, but that presentation will discuss the revenue side of this project. Currently, we'd like to be able to work with Stewart's ambulance to secure a one year contract, which is authorized under our existing contract. Fire chief to begin holding public input sessions and continue to develop the nine one one ambulance service business plan for the twenty twenty four budget process. And we'd like to be able to deliver that to the Board of Selectmen at the October fourth, twenty twenty three meeting. Again, this is a fifty thousand foot overview of the expenses side of this endeavor. I can try to get answers to questions that you may have. I'm sure I won't be able to answer them now, as will the, the chief and the deputy. So we're here to try to entertain your questions.
Jim, can we ask Stewart's how much they've billed over the last five years and how much they received? And maybe they'll give it to us.
I can ask that question.
Can I interject on that? I had that conversation today. I need to talk to the manager about it. He, they are willing to do that. However, it's proprietary, and I don't know how we would handle it under ninety one A. He's more than willing to share it with you folks, but we, I, I don't want to see it until we know whether it's public or not. And that's not a decision I can actually make.
And I will stand behind what the chief has said because that's what was said to me by the Chair of Stewart's.
Yeah, and I hope that if they could see it, they could look at setting their budget up or let Stewart see the budget and say, are we missing anything? Which would seem to me the other way to get the same information. In terms of the revenue, I think that, that may be a little harder to get. But I think that revolving account, we don't have to take all the revenue received and put in it. We could say, okay, it's going to go in, ninety five percent of it is going to go to offset the running and five percent retained for capital items. Am I correct?
Absolutely. And I, I think the, one of the ways to handle that is to have, you know, Mr. Burt always asked about this with the capital reserve funds, what should we top that account out at? So if we're having good years with equipment, you know, and if it's, let's say, we know an ambulance is five hundred thousand dollars to replace, and we have five hundred and fifty thousand dollars in that account, we're good. We don't need anymore. Let's, let's shift that back to the taxpayer or whatever direction the board wants. But that, that is a variable that is up to your discretion.
So I think we also, I mean, it's kind of, to me, it's whatever's most transparent to the taxpayer. So if we do a percentage, it may not be as transparent to them that this is the ambulance service, this is the amount we have revenue towards it, and then we need capital, and that that also they have to do through warrant articles. When you shift it, you know, once you do the initial warrant article, if you shift it just annually, I think they start to lose the amount of money that could have gone to the operation of the ambulance into the capital. It's the same amount of money one way. I'm just looking at what is the most transparent and easiest for the taxpayer to see.
Yeah, I, I can tell you in, in conversations with the chief from Tilton, they put a hundred percent into their revolving fund, but their revolving fund is used for the purchase of all of their equipment. So every piece of fire apparatus they've ever bought, every ambulance they've ever bought, every piece of equipment for their ambulances they ever bought, it was from their ambulance revenue fund. It was not from the taxpayer or any other capital reserve fund. So we can actually reach out to a number of different communities and get what they do and be able to provide that to you so that you guys have an idea of how you want to handle that.
Well, the equipment may not come, but they will be paying for the staff and not getting the revenue. So it comes, to me, is the same way. You can put all your money there and not ask for it, but you're going to pay more each year because you can't cover with revenue your expense of the service. So I'm just looking to say which is the easiest for everybody to understand and see exactly what they're paying for. That's what, what my question is about.
Okay.
And we might not be able to get the exact numbers from Stewart, but they might be able to give us just a percentage. How does our percentage stack up against other towns? They could just say, we, we receive of billable amounts, we receive forty five percent, fifty percent, something like that.
I suspect that kind of global figure is fairly readily available. I will say this, our demographics in Wolfboro are pretty good as far as insurance coverage and so forth compared to many places.
Correct. So that would give us a good idea because we're seeing forty three point eight percent from other communities average. And Stewart's might not be able to give us the numbers of what they get for revenues and how much they collect from it, but they might be able to say, oh, our collection rate is sixty two percent. And then that would give us an idea of where we fall.
And if I may, that, those numbers do not reflect differences in the way those towns have set up their collections and so forth. And that would be a decision you folks would make as to how aggressively you wish to pursue different types of billing and so forth. And how to, at what point do you write it off? That is a decision that the board would make. We would anticipate putting a variety of options in front of you for consideration. And if I may, the, in your backup material and what we'll be discussing tomorrow morning with the CIP committee is essentially what Mrs. Murray talked about. I, I more or less split the difference. Obviously, that'll change based on whatever policy you decide to enact. But it anticipates putting a portion, roughly fifty percent of the revenue towards capital items and the rest essentially general fund. But that, obviously, that percentage is whatever you decide it is.
Any other questions or comments? Any further?
Is the board okay if I continue to pursue a contract with Stewart's for twenty twenty four so that we can advise the
I'll make a mo-
Bidders.
I'll make a motion that you pursue a one year contract with Stewart's ambulance heading in January two thousand and twenty four.
Motion by Linda, seconded by Luke. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Are I opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next is a discussion about our sidewalk right of ways.
So I just wanted to know if we plan on looking at other towns, and primarily the one I'm looking at is Concord, and sitting down sometime and figuring out what kind of sidewalk ordinance we're going to have. I was talking to someone else today, again, that said that it was impossible during our latest event to get a wheelchair down some sidewalks in town and thought that the minimum thirty six inch for ADA was not appropriate. It wasn't working for, for at least that night and for other times. I had to, I did help get three people into the event this weekend that were handicapped that called me specifically so that I could help them maneuver our sidewalks in some of our areas. So I'm just wondering when we look, when we will be looking at and addressing some kind of sidewalk ordinance.
I have, I did have been walking around town because they take the trolley, and we're going to need to, to talk about what's on the sidewalk. One is your A frames that are in the walkway. This is the one where somebody pulls out a table and then there's a chair and then you got a dog. And we are going to need to get bike racks because I'm starting to see bikes asking people to come in town. Brian, this is yours. Two people walking next to each other, they have a hard time making it. And so I, I, as I go around, I take pictures so we can kind of look at our sidewalks, some of the places when I'm down there that were having issues. But I, I'm with Brian. I think we need to know where our boundaries are, have a discussion about, you know, what we do if the sidewalk is partly private and partly public, and then how do we get enough width? Because you can say, and, and we know this is coming because of COVID. People want to be outside. This was not, we didn't deal with this three years ago. This is a new phenomenon with wanting more of it. So we want to accommodate sitting outside, but we don't want to make walking on our sidewalk so difficult that people eventually say, I'm not, I'm not walking down to that store, I'm not going to deal with that in the sidewalk. So I think we have a, a, an interesting balancing act as we do these ordinances. And I, other selectmen, if you go around, you clip a picture of it, then we have something to look at when we go to talk about it and, and, and get some input. I said to the EDC, I'd like them to have some discussion. It'd be good for the chamber to have some discussion. I think this is something we as a community need to agree on what we need and what's best for the pedestrians and the business community.
Yeah, walking communities are becoming, I just went to Salem, Mass. this past weekend for a wedding, and what a different Salem, Mass. is now compared to how it was twenty five years ago when I was a kid. It has become a walking community, and they've done that in Newburyport, and they've done it in Rockport, and they've done it in a lot of Maine seaside communities. So we are going to become a, more of a walking community, and we're going to have more people that want outdoor spaces. So we have to just figure how we can blend it, make it work for everyone.
Yep.
And I agree too. I think one of the, you know, definitely agree with one of the points you made too is going to be knowing where our boundaries are on these sidewalks. We've been finding out recently that, you know, some of these commercial properties own out into the sidewalk a little bit. Not only just to know what they can do on theirs or what we can do on ours, but also when it comes time to do repair work on them, we need to know the limits of what we're going to pay for, and if they want to pay their portion, so it all match, you know, match it. It's important, important to know what, who has what. So anybody else?
Okay.
So I, I just, I mean, I, I need to know, are we going to establish a committee to begin investigating this? Is this going to be something that's assigned out? Because bringing it up is, is wonderful, but if you want movement, Brian, we got to figure out a way to
I mean, I think that if I would be on a committee, I think Jason should be on a committee, our code enforcement officer. Some towns use code enforcement officers to enforce sidewalk and things like this. Some actually in Concord, I think they use their health inspector is the person who's in charge of making sure that-
And you know who it is in our ordinance?
Yeah.
The Director of Public Works.
I know, it's good. We, and we got into that with, I would be more than willing to be on the committee, but I would like the chamber, I'd like representing from the EDC, I'd like representation from the planning board, so we get a good mix of people in the community and that we just kind of take a look at it and bring something back. And we'll need to get, see if we can get to the registry and deeds and see what surveys are there. Our tax map doesn't do it for us.
And, and just out of curiosity, I mean, I, I think this is a good start. If we, if we had a board, two board members, chamber, EDC, planning board, do you want a citizen component of it?
Yeah, absolutely.
Two? Put it out, see what we get?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
So what I'll do is, I'll work tomorrow or sometime in the next week to get a committee stand up for sidewalks. Thank you, Brian.
Now a discussion about leasing of town properties.
So I, I did ask, and I don't know if Jim has had time, but I'd like to find out, and if we have to go to town council or not, how much and what kind of leasing is customary and can we do as a select board? We've leased a couple of spots on Kate Park for the use of propane tanks, storage of propane tanks. And when do, when does it become enough? When, if somebody else wants to lease a section next to another building and then someone decides they want to lease a, a portion for, so we, I think we need to find out, because I know that the state RSA says that you're not supposed to lease property that already has a public use, especially if it becomes a detriment to public use. So it's something that I think that we need to look at going forward when we start leasing the, for the bike trails in Abernathy, which already had a public- for the bike trails in Abernaki, which already had a public use, and we gave it another public use, but then we had a lease agreement with it, or a license agreement, which are universal. So it's just something I think we have to look at. Then we're, you know, are we going to be leasing pieces of sidewalk to people so they can put tables? Are we going to be leasing other areas? So it's something that I just think that we need to find out what, what our end game is. How much are we going to keep doing this? I mean, when you say yes to two, how do you say no to the next two? So I just think it's something that we need to, to look at. And I don't know if we can get more information from town council to see what is appropriate, what is not appropriate, and if we can decide, you know, where's the line?
So the, the proper mechanism is a license agreement, which is what we've been doing with the most recent documents. And I think what it really boils down to is a policy decision by the board as to what you're going to do.
Yeah, and I guess when I look back at some of the things we've done, we took one side of one dock at the railroad station, five hundred dollars gives us rent. It started a young business. Kate Park, those tanks, we get two thousand dollars a year. It was on the edge of the park. So it isn't like we took the park and took a big hunk out of it, and I would agree with you that in that. We, we used the water tank up on North Main Street. I think we get about over thirty-five thousand dollars a year running space up on that. We rent our restaurant, Duck Side. We rent the railroad station. Some of the land that we use, we do get revenue back for the town, so that's what we're balancing in that. So, you know, I think each case is on its own, and I think we, we talk about it. I have no problem trying to get an attorney's, you know, opinion on how much, but I think it really becomes the, what board is there at the time, and what we feel is the sentiment of the community.
And then the last one we've licensed is the biggest one. We've licensed the, the building and the use of bike trails on a whole very large public-owned or town-owned property.
After we put out to the voters a warrant article who granted us approval to accept the trails, that's very different, I see, than the board of selectmen saying, that's ours. Okay, we're just going to.
But, and there is no, and there is no revenues for that.
No, they, we sent that out to the voters. They're the ones who decided on that. And I think it, because that is multiple users.
Any other questions, comments? Sort of proceed, we're going to kind of look for an opinion from legal. Is that kind of what I'm taking away? All right. Next discussion, warrant article recommendation for the police commission.
Yeah, I, I ended up finding out just by, I was researching something else, that the police commission doesn't have the authority granted in state RSA to recommend warrant articles on our town meeting. So an example that's, that kind of hit me a little strange, and I'm, I'm not going to say that I don't believe we needed an SRO officer. It's always good to have safety and safety in the schools. But that particular warrant article had two kind of issues with it. One, me being a representative on the budget committee, the budget committee had told me that I had no vote. That was, again, a mistake with state RSA. I did have a, an option to vote, and I was told for two years I couldn't vote. So the vote came up at the budget committee, and it passed by one. I could have been the vote that made it fail, or I could have made it pass by two, but that was taken away. Then the board of selectmen, we abstained from it because we were a little concerned about the information that was brought to us in the eleventh hour. Then it was recommended by the police commission. So if you take the police commission's recommendation away, and I vote no on the SRO officer, so it fails with the budget committee, you have a much different picture that's put in front of the voters.
Well, it doesn't fail, Brian. It's a, it's a vote to not recommend. Only the voters can decide that.
Correct. So what ends up, what I'm looking at going forward is to make sure that we now know that, and we're going to have to check to see if we've had other things slip through the cracks. Budget, a member from the select board on the budget committee does have voting rights, and the police commission does not have the, the, the right to recommend a warrant article that goes to town meeting.
I think, you brought that up at the police commission meeting, I think Steve was more than.
Correct. They were, they were very, very, very amicable about it.
Linda?
Yeah, this, this goes back to how we found out. Brian did do the research, thank you. You know, we send our warrant articles to DRA and to town attorney that had never been pointed out to us. We always can learn and grow, which is exactly what we did. But Chairman John McDonald of the budget committee got the New Hampshire Municipal Association to come to the town of Wolfboro, did something for the department heads, and did something, and did a presentation for the budget committee. And we got a written response to asking that question, and it's RSA thirty-two colon three four, five, six, I mean, four, three, six, and it goes through, it is not just the police commission, it's the library, anything else. It can only be the board of selectmen and the budget committee, and we have an opinion on that. So we've, we've learned.
The planning board too. For zoning amendments, the planning board can recommend.
This was, this is special warrant articles. This was based on a budget, okay? Yep. And so we have that opinion. There was absolutely a wonderful course with a lot of information for us, and we, as all boards can grow and learn, and this is one that we did, just like we can no longer bold or underline any words in a warrant article. That we found out after doing it for a while. Why they don't catch them the first time through beats me, but I'm glad to know this, and we will not make that error again.
According to the, to the New Hampshire municipal representatives that had the course for us, it's because there are only three employees that look at every single warrant article in the state, so.
I, Brian, you could say that, but we send it to town attorney, and we send it to them, and you, that's how we get, we only make good decisions based on the information we're provided, and that was a piece of information we weren't provided.
Any other comments? All right, moving on. RIB spray fields and recreation property discussion.
So we had a quick site visit, which we really didn't walk the site. We, we had a good conversation with the Single Track Association, the Cross Country Ski Association staff, board members, and the representatives from Woodard and Curran, our contract operators. We have some signage which we would like to begin to have the board consider for installation in those areas. I think we still have some work to do on some of those signages, you know, some of those ones that identify when people are getting close to the spray fields. But the trail closed one, I got some correspondence from a couple of board members. I've sent it back to Woodard and Curran for them to adjust that, so we'll get that back to you guys for consideration. The other thing that I want you to be aware of is I did have a conversation with a trail builder. He's going to do everything in his power to stay at least a hundred feet outside of the spray fields. He has those maps, and he'll, he'll lay that out when he comes on site to do the work. So his intention is not to go within one hundred feet of that buffer. Again, the, the current buffer is identified as seventy-five feet, but there's question whether or not it should be one hundred feet or not. The state has it identified as a hundred feet, but that's for affluent disposal on fields and open areas. Forested is a little bit different, which this is area where we're talking is forested. That's why the seventy-five-foot rule came into play. It's not a rule, but there's some question whether or not it should be. So the good news is the trail builder plans on staying outside that one-hundred-foot buffer, and Dave Didion has the updated information that I received from board members regarding the signage, and I hope to get that back to you early next week so that we can get moving on that.
And another thing we're going to have to look at is there are a lot of trails that exist that have been there for a long time that we as a board didn't approve, and their entrances and exits are on either access roads or that became cross-country ski roads, and those trails are well within seventy-five or a hundred feet of the spray fields. So if you have to go down a trail that is too close to get into the entrance to a trail that that entrance is too close, they're going to have to potentially reroute some of those old trails or shut them down, just sections of them, or something to that effect.
Well, we're going to shut down with our signage those cross-country ski trails that go through our spray fields, and so clearly mark them. So we're going to take care of that mostly through our marking and signage. We just make, need to make sure we get them all.
All right, any other, any other comments? Move on to other business. Linda?
Yeah, I just want to remind the public that on Thursday, August twenty-fourth, New Hampshire DOT is going to hold another public hearing on Route Twenty-Eight South. The road upgrade, sidewalks, drainage in that area. It will start at five-thirty. Doors will open. A presentation will take place at six, at six-thirty, and we're looking for a good public turnout.
Thank you. Any other business? Luke?
I just wanted to say to Brian and the EDC and all the people involved in last week's festivity that that was a wonderful job, and I've never, in my lifetime, I've never, I don't think I've ever seen that many people at town docks, even on Fourth of July. You hit it out of the park, so you did a really good job.
Thank you.
Good job, Brian.
Yep.
I was out on the bay watching them, and it was just amazing to see them coming out. You turn around to the islands and stuff, you could actually see the lights bouncing off the islands and the trees out there and stuff. It was.
You were on above in the water?
Yeah.
Yeah, I heard that's a great place to view it.
I got some videos I could show you, so. It's, what I understand, it's different, completely different there than it is on land, the viewing of it, so. Any, go ahead, Brian.
So under other business, I have reached out to the Lakes Region Planning Commission, and with all the projects that we're having that are happening right now, I'm thinking that we might want to reach out to have a circuit planner assist our town planner for one day a week potentially to help him so that he focuses on the most restrictive practices going forward as our master plan states as a, as a requirement. And I think that right now we have a lot of things happening at, at the same time, and I think him having some assistance would be beneficial.
I guess I would just like clarification. What town projects are you speaking to, Brian?
Well, just, just any, any of the proposed developments that have come up. We've had a hundred and eighty units that went before planning and zoning and ZBA. We've had a lot of development projects that have come up, and we had.
You're not specifically talking town-based projects?
Correct.
You're talking private projects?
Yeah, projects in the town.
Understood.
Yeah, and, and we, and we've had all the zoning amendments that were proposed at the last town meeting that he could have used some assistance with. So I just think that it would be good if we got someone in to take a little bit of weight off of him and maybe also help be a liaison with the town manager. So that it gives everybody a little bit of, of an extra boost. Takes a little bit off of you, takes a little bit off of him.
Yeah, we'd also have to see where that would fit into a budget too and stuff to.
Well, we were looking for a assistant town manager for ninety thousand dollars, and we were looking for a town engineer for ninety thousand dollars, and both of those fell flat. We haven't found anybody. So I'm thinking that if we had somebody that assisted our town planner and was a liaison with our town manager, that might help everybody a little bit, take a little bit off of our planner and take a little bit off of our town manager's shoulders. And it would be a third of the price of what we were looking for, for an engineer or an assistant town manager.
I guess I really feel that there is a real need for a town engineer, no matter how we do it, or we take the money to hire engineers to come through. I think in the long run, it is the second set of eyes, and I think we get better projects. You know, I, I don't have any way of evaluating whether it makes any sense to bring a circuit planner in here a couple of days a week. This is something we should really see laid out. I just have no way of, of knowing whether that is the best way to get some support for Jim, and so I just don't know at this point. We'd have to have more information.
Okay, any other, other business? Committee reports. Let's start with Dave.
Yeah, I had a conservation, conservation commission meeting on Monday. It's a pretty active group. I don't know if you noticed that down, going into Pleasant Valley, they were pulling base of species today and the day before. They just noticed that it came up and was pointed out by somebody in the valley. But they are very active in, in all of their land, especially whiteface with the parking lot now complete, and a little bit of trail work up there. So yeah, they're, they're very active. As you can see tonight, they, they're very good at locating funds as well, so. That's all I have.
Okay. So last night, we had a planning board meeting. This morning, we had a community, Wolfboro Community TV board meeting, and Monday, we also had a Wolfboro Waters meeting, and I attended this, this week, so, in a busy week. Linda?
Yeah, I had the Wolfboro Waters Committee meeting, and we had a presentation on the drainage for the public safety building, which was very informative. We had Rick Vanderpool, who presented a proposal to do some Woody Stream work on some of the streams in town and look at maybe for two thousand and twenty-five, so we'll look further into that. We talked about the damage done to Rust Pond from the July storm, and the fact that there were two beaver dams that were breached and fell apart, and huge amount of sediment went into Rust Pond. So we're looking at the three-nineteen grant to see if there's some way to amend it, to get some monies, to address what happened. In that grant was to put a pipe through the beaver dam so they didn't fall apart or breach, and it was a little late to do that now, even though they say the beavers are coming back. I toured the spray fields with Brian. We went up and watched the, how it worked and.
And it didn't smell very good.
No, I was waiting for you to say that.
It actually smelled terrible. It was, I thought that it being more treated, you know, that it wouldn't be that bad. I thought like a musty smell or something like that, but it didn't, it smelled terrible.
Yeah. I wouldn't ride my bike through it. The chamber board meeting I went to, I had two friends of Pop, friends of Pop Whalen. I had a library trustees meeting, and I met with the Wolfboro Waters Subcommittee on Assessing, and we talked about the testing that we were doing this year and how that's turned out, testing that we still want to do. Testing that we still want to do and are looking at what we will need for next year. There is concern about the types of cyanobacteria in the water, and that's part of what they're trying to identify. So that's all I have.
We had a Budget Committee meeting, too.
I had a, I went to the Chamber meeting as well. I had a Heritage Commission meeting, and I also had, last Thursday night, I had Friends of the Libby.
So I had a, Linda and I had a Budget Committee meeting that was just the, kind of the kickoff for the year, and I had the, an EDC meeting, which was a kind of a wrap-up of the event at the docks that was yesterday, my VOS meeting today, and tomorrow, we start CIP, 9 o'clock in the morning.
Town Manager's Report.
So I had a, Brian and I attended a meeting at PSI Plastics regarding the discussion the Board had a couple weeks ago about supporting their expansion. To give you a little bit more background information about what's going on there, they need to install, or they would like to install, a new press to the Wicker's Side Drive of the building. It's a large 210-pound press, I think it is, similar to one they have now. In order to operate that press, they need to have additional power run. What they're looking at right now is to do essentially a directional bore under the building to secure power to the Wicker's Side, Wicker's Drive side of the building, go into a transformer, at which point it would operate those two large presses. I met with Benoit LaMontaigne earlier this week from the State Department of Economic Development and discussed the project with him. Couple of things that we need to be aware of, and I have reached out to PSI. This grant essentially will have to go through the town going forward because the grant is issued to either a nonprofit or a municipality. Where the electrical system is owned by the town, that directional bore all the way to the transformer would have to be a town asset to be able to receive this grant. The grant is currently estimated, or the project is currently estimated at $750,000. So this will take place, coming in the February timeframe. I'm hopeful that PSI will support a grant writer to be able to do this project, and then it's a matter of figuring it out, who manages the funds going forward if awarded the grant. So it was a productive meeting. It was a productive meeting with Benoit. It was actually quite interesting. We have a lot of similar acquaintances and mentors, so it was actually turned into a very good conversation. The last storm, right now, we're estimating that the cost of that last storm is approximately Steve, Casey, and I met. We've been able to identify $130,000 within our operating budgets to help stand up some of these costs. The good news on this is part of that $350,000 is the staff labor for when they were actually working their regular hours. The reason he's documenting that is he can put in for reimbursement through the declaration under a different mechanism than what we've traditionally used from Homeland Security. So he's actively working on that, but he feels comfortable with finding this $130,000 providing no other storms, and we're able to get through November, December without too much trouble. He feels comfortable with where we're at. I also met with the Rust Pond Group with Steve Randall and Tavis. Next step from this point is to meet with Tavis, myself, the representatives from Rust Pond, and CEI to move that to the next steps and probably come in and talk to the Board about that alteration to the grant that you were talking about previously, Linda. Public Safety Building Project is starting to start next week right now. That's what the plan is, so you'll probably be seeing a trail, work trailer moving there, and we're actively moving forward with that. I had a meeting as well with the engineer and the two representatives from the Energy Committee. We went through the plans pretty in-depth, based on some feedback that the Energy Committee received from somebody who they had reviewed the plans. Couple items we're looking at, but right now, the building looks very efficient going forward, so there's some positive news there. Library generator will be coming in this fall. That's been assigned out to Barry. Barry and I met with Barry Muccio from MED, met with Allison, the new director. We're going to have to look at probably additional funds to get this thing tied in and operational, but more to follow on that. Other than that, working on CIPs and budgets, and CIP kicks off tomorrow. That's all I have.
Thank you. Questions from the press?
Well, I want to say I appreciated the opportunity this week to visit the wastewater treatment plant and take a ride with David Didion and Linda and go up and see the spray fields in action. It's quite impressive. I've seen the water retention pump, but I've never seen the actual spray field, so that was good. I also noticed that there's a cyanobacteria alert issued for Lake Wentworth just as of yesterday. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Public input.
I've got a couple of questions on the upcoming ambulance situation. I keep hearing the term revolving funds. Are those the same as capital reserve funds, or am I off the base?
No, they are not. It's a different mechanism. We actually have a couple revolving funds in town right now that, I believe the police department has one, and you see in the warrant articles annually, they pull funds to buy their police cruisers as well. Parks and Rec has one that they do a lot of their programs out of to buy shirts and et cetera, so it doesn't hit the taxpayer.
Okay, now I understand what those are. All right, the second question is, is there any thought, and I think you ought to think seriously about this, of considering the ambulance services as an enterprise fund? It is a business.
We can get legal guidance on that.
I just think in response to the question about transparency, it would probably be a little more effective from a transparency point of view to be a standalone enterprise fund. And that's really why I'm going in that direction. And I agree, Jim, we probably do need some legal, but, you know, since you're going to be billing and since you're going to be basically running a business, because that's what you're doing, I think it ought to be treated as an enterprise fund.
Would you anticipate that paying for itself 100%?
Well, we won't know that until you guys come up with the, you guys come up with the revenue. It probably is a loser, more than likely. It probably will constantly be a loser, but again, I'm back to the transparency point of view. And even the, even the fact that you've got an enterprise fund that runs in the red, if you will. I think from a transparency point of view, it makes a lot more sense, knowing full well we're not going to, you know, it's a business, we know it's going to run in the red, everybody knows it, fine, but let's get it out in the open so we know how much it is going to run in the red.
So one of the mechanisms we're looking at, Bob, and I'll get that opinion, but one of the mechanisms we're looking at is to place all of those incremental costs associated with the ambulance, which would be staffing, benefits, et cetera, in an ambulance department similar to what you see today. So if we're hiring eight people, those eight people may be identified in that ambulance budget for transparency moving forward. Lot of moving pieces, but I will investigate if an ambulance can be an enterprise fund.
I would agree with the, obviously, the separate department, which does give you the, you know, the, there it is, all by itself in the budget. But I guess my, I guess my point is, too often revolving funds like the police department fund get lost in the shovel from an accounting point of view. It really, that revolving fund isn't out in the open, so people don't know about it. I just think it's an enterprise fund. You've got a PNL, you've got a business plan. The fact that it runs in the red, everybody knows it's going to, but again, I go back to that whole transparency issue. I just feel very strongly about it.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Bobby Bedman. Couple things. I was hoping that you could send the PowerPoint to the Budget Committee on the ambulance that you presented. That would be wonderful. The other thing that I wanted to ask about the ambulance and the numbers is I kept hearing Tilton and numbers for Tilton and looking at other towns. When we look at other towns, I think it's very important to make sure we're paying attention to the median age of those towns and also their median income. So, for example, Tilton only has 3,929 citizens, and their median age is 46.3. That is, I mean, we're talking about thousands and thousands of more people in Wolfboro, and we're talking about a median age over 11 years older than Tilton. So when we're looking at those numbers, if we can get Stort's numbers and actually verify what we have paid for as far as services, instead of looking at Tilton's numbers overall, I think we have to look at our population. We really cannot compare ourselves to Tilton and some of those other towns that are running these services for a much younger community and smaller community. The other thing was, back to GI Plastics, I had asked during the Budget Committee meeting if we had checked the environmental impact on GI Plastics before we accept that money and then hand out that money. I don't think Wolfboro really wants to be in the business of adding PFAS into our town, into our community. So if we can figure out the environmental impact of GI Plastics expanding and us being part of this, I think it would really be good for the citizens. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just to close the loop on the earlier issue, Mr. Shea and I have agreed to have further conversations about the effectiveness and attention given by Marine Patrol, Crescent Lake, and Lake Wentworth. I feel it's fair to represent on the gentleman's behalf that the issue remains tabled for the time being. Our Marine Patrol officers are capable of figuring out a parking spot and walking a bit, if that's what's necessary, to give the place the attention it needs. And I wanted also just to thank you all for your support with the use of the town dock for our Ambar boat. It's been actually a great PR tool. I've been down there, I've had some great conversations with people just checking on that vessel, and it demonstrates, I think, a really forward-thinking position on behalf of the town to be ready to respond to issues that happen out on the water, and it's been, it's been a really, a really good thing as far as I see it. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, I forgot my biggest one. I wanted to thank Chief Zadi today. He took the time to go on a Zoom call and ask about the specs of potentially putting in a safe haven baby box in the new building. So I really appreciate that you took the time to consider that, just the specs, just so we can move forward with potentially adding that to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for public input? Okay.
Need a motion to go into non-pel?
I do.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Motion by Dave, seconded by Linda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.